Okay, I will call the meeting to order at 6:31. Do we have any public comment?
Let me look real quick, hold on. No.
Okay. And we'll move on. Would someone like to review our norms, please?
I can. As a board, we will focus on student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, run meetings that are, that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Michael, thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Anthony. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll do a roll call. Scott?
Yes.
Cynthia? Cory? Anthony?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, Randy, it's your turn.
Well, this first agenda, I'm on 5A, is a discussion for you as a board about policy governance. And so Julie, I think it's probably most appropriate for you to facilitate this. For those of you who don't know, the board has spent a significant amount of time over the last couple of years learning about policy governance, which is a different type of governance model, and it's being used by the Taconic and Green District and the BRSU Board. So it's something that we, as a, as a community, have been moving forward with. And Meadowwe has, has engaged in work readings, activities, and has sort of not, not yet reached the place of, is this where you want to go as a board or not? And so I think I'll turn it over to you, Julie, to kind of facilitate this conversation and see where people are and kind of where, what you might want to do next.
Sure. So at some point during the pandemic, it was sort of agreed upon by our board that we would just like hit, pump the brakes a little and maybe just work on practicing. We've done several meetings where we've had a practice session of policy governance. And what that entails is basically a scenario is presented to us and then we go through policy governance style policies to see where that may be addressed in policy and if we would need to make changes to that policy to be able to actually appropriately address that scenario. So we had done several of those and we were sort of committed to continuing on that, but maybe not moving forward with Val Gardner, who is a policy governance guru, who is essentially, we had hired her to guide us through going forward with full policy governance. So we, we made a decision to sort of slow things down because we didn't know how much time we collectively as board members would be able to give to this work. So now that we have a new, a couple new board members, it just seemed appropriate to like touch base on where we're all at with that. If we want to continue just having some practice sessions, if we're ready to get Val back involved. And maybe what we need to do is have Val or Jackie or somebody come and just sort of catch the new, newbies up to where everyone else is at and then we'll make that decision. I don't know. I didn't feel, I don't feel comfortable making that decision for us. I think that we all need to weigh in on that. So that's where we're at and I'd like to discuss that.
You think we can just give a brief rundown of what policy governance means for Anthony and Cynthia? Like just a description or if they even, or if they're familiar, they might be familiar with it already? I don't know.
Sure. Do you want to do that, Randy?
Sure. So, so policy governance has four main types of policies that govern your work as a board and, and that directly influenced my work as a superintendent. So the four broad areas of policies are ends policies, which essentially are the big picture system-wide goals of, kind of related to the survey that we're going to talk about in a little while and, you know, what is it that your community values in education? And what's the purpose and what's, what are you looking for through your educational system? That kind of typically will become your ends policy. And that is your North Star as a board, but it's also my North Star as a superintendent to then say, how are we going to implement the work in our schools to support moving towards achievement of that ends policy? So then the second group of policies are executive limitations policies. And those are really about my work. They deal with, I'll just read you a few of the categories. Like basically my overall constraint, what I can and cannot do. How am I going to protect assets of your district? Treatment of students, parents, guardians, treatment of staff, compensation and benefits, financial planning and budgeting. It's, it's all of the constraints around my work that allow me to do my job and have a level of accountability to you as a board. The third group of board policies are called board management delegation. And this has to do with kind of more directly you and me. So unity of control, what do I do? What do you do? Accountability of the superintendent. So how, how are you holding me accountable for my work? And we have a common understanding of that. Delegating to the superintendent, having real clarity around what is it that I'm responsible for? And what is it you're responsible for? And how do we keep those lines very clear so that you're not interfering with my work and I'm not overstepping into your work and stepping onto, into board-related work? And then like delegating to me of different responsibilities and monitoring my performance. So there's a whole set of policies related to each of those areas. And again, to make sure that there's a common understanding of our, each of our roles and responsibilities and I know what you expect of me. And then the fourth group of policies oversee the governance process. So this, the fourth group are about eight policies that are really your accountability system to yourself for your own work. So, you know, what's your governing style? How are you going to operate? What's the board, your board job description? What's your agenda? What's your chair's responsibility? How are you going to plan agendas? What's your code of conduct? So that you all have a common understanding of what you do and don't do as a board. You know, what are the principles by which you operate by? And, you know, what is your overall investment in this process? So, so those are the four main categories. And I think that what, what is really fascinating, having, being a part of this process with Taconic and Green is what you will find if you adopt policy governance as a board is you will find that you are not directly involved in the day-to-day operations of the school, decisions that are made at the school, things related to students. You don't, your level of involvement with that day-to-day work is, is fairly nonexistent because that all falls under my, my jurisdiction and my responsibility. And so that, I think, in some ways has been one of the challenges because you are, you as a Meadowwe School District are responsible for your students in Paulette and Rupert. And you're, you're much closer to sort of the community than Taconic and Green, which is representing nine different towns. It offers them a little bit of a level of space. But what I want to share with you is that right now we are going through a really intentional process in Taconic and Green in which I'm giving my interpretation of the, the policies under that second group, my executive limitations, and I present those to the board. And then the board, we go back and forth and we talk through, we talk through my interpretation, whether they agree, whether they disagree, whether they might see it differently. And what happens through that process is that both parties have a much greater clarity of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And, and, and so it builds actually a much clearer set of responsibility for me and the board than I've ever worked in or seen in a board before. And that clarity then seems to, I mean, what I'm experiencing is that it directly impacts my effectiveness in my work. We just had, I have a situation that I'm still kind of in the process of working through with somebody. And, and what I'm finding is that it's a difference of interpretation of what we, of what something means. And so we're going to bring it to the board to talk through. You know, this is how I interpreted, this is how it was interpreted by the board. And then we publicly are able to talk through that and come to a common understanding. And then both parties now have understanding. So it, it, it just, it's a very different approach to how you might operate as a board. And I see that Jim jumped on and I don't know Julie if it's, you know, for those of you who don't know, Jim Salzgiver is the board chair for BRSU. So he is also, you know, very, very knowledgeable of policy governance and can certainly offer, if you're interested, perspective of a board member who's been working through this process and feels, I think, you know, fairly comfortable with it and has a good understanding. So that's my very big nutshell of the policies and the process. And I don't want, know how far in detail you want to go, but hopefully that's enough to get you started.
Michael? Unmute yours. Okay, there you are.
Hello? Yeah. First, thank you, Randy. I thought that was a really clear description of those four kind of categories. And it is a really complex thing. And I don't know if I can offer anything other than my own somewhat ambivalent point of view. But I feel very much like the policy governance is, to use a cliched phrase, the way of the future. I think the validity of it that really I have a lot of faith in and that I appreciate about it is that it, it, it makes it, how to put this? It kind of deep personalizes things. We are literally creating policies, theoretically hammering them out amidst a chain of command and arriving at clear definitions along the way. And then being guided by those policies going forward, as I'm understanding it. So as new board members come onboard in the future, that policy body, sort of the understanding of it increases. And I guess the fluency with the future board would increase behind it. At least this is how I kind of see it in my ideal mind. What concerns me about it is it takes a lot of work and study to understand, I think, how to use it. And we do have guidance, which is helpful. But it seems, the, the part that gives me pause is that there's really a lot to learn and understand about how to reorient oneself and the whole concept of what the school board should kind of be doing. Or at least taking out of it the, the personality factor in the school board, which on one level I really respect and think that's valuable. On another, on the other hand, I kind of get a little nervous and uncomfortable about that because I want there to be a personal input. I just get concerned where it can steer a board completely in directions that it doesn't need to go and in places that it shouldn't be in. And I think policy governance in that way is a really, really valuable system and set of tools that it will be worth all of us kind of learning in the future. But I guess the ambivalent part to me is it feels like, you know, here's the plans to the rocket ship. And in your spare time, let's build this thing and make sure we don't leave out, you know, the oxygen system because we're going to blast off with it. And that part, silly analogy, but it gives me a little bit of, of anxiety because it's a lot to, to get. It just is going to take a lot of time. So I don't know if that brings us any further along, but that's my, that's my current state of, of perspective on this. I would like us to go ahead with it. And at the same time, I'm not sure how long that might take to actually like come to the street, so to speak. Come to where it's actually affecting the way we do what we do and improving it. Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Probably a mouthful, but so be it.
Can I say something? Just that I, I think that was very well said, Michael. You articulated very well, kind of the way I'm feeling. I definitely see a lot of value in this. I think it gives a framework to, you know, when a problem or a decision is brought to us, it gives us a framework to kind of work through and make sure we're always answering or approaching stuff in the same manner. So it takes that inconsistency out. It's probably very good for our reliability because you have a constant way you're addressing things. So I see the value in it for that. But I too have a concern that in some ways it almost seems like it adds a layer of your accuracy and maybe takes the, you know, the ability to put your personal feelings in as much. Takes the, you know, the, which I think you were kind of saying, Michael. So I too have those concerns and I'm a little overwhelmed by the amount of study and, and understanding it's going to take to use it effectively. I also wonder about new board members coming on and having to learn it all. Probably would be easier once it's all moving as a finely oiled machine to catch on, I suppose, but still a bit overwhelming. So I think those are a lot of the same concerns you're expressing that I too have.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Cory?
Well, I don't, I have too much to say. I, I feel like it's, to me, it seems like such a great structure to have. I really do want to move forward with it. I feel like what Michael said about like that fear of not knowing enough to make it good enough. It's a living kind of thing. It's a constant where it requires input and back and forth throughout. So it's not like one and done where, and I don't, so that to me, I am reassured by that, that we are, it asks for us to give input and Randy and, and to just be constantly in touch. And I, I think that is one of the benefits of it.
Jim?
I'm kind of sticking my nose in here. I'm sorry. But I thought I'd just kind of, you know, I've been on school boards and other boards for a whole long time. And one of the things that I loved when, you know, it's been a long road to get to understand policy governance. It isn't easy. You're absolutely right on that. But one of the things I found after being on a lot of boards is most boards don't have any structure. And they have a very difficult time understanding what their job is. And they usually just end up going back to the old, let's do what is familiar, which usually means micromanaging in schools. It's, you know, let's decide what should be on the school lunch menu, you know? It's like boards tend to get into things that are comfortable for them. And, and those tend to be not places where the board ought to be spending time. So the one thing I like about this structure is it really does define roles and responsibilities. It isn't easy. It's actually a lot of work. But, but when we were looking at, you know, we looked at different, you know, different governance structures. And there are very few really, you know, solid governance structures out there for boards like this. And this is one of the, you know, the most recognized and, and, you know, has stood the time and been used in a whole lot of places. It's not easy, but you know, nobody said being on a board was going to be easy either. So I, I, I love the idea of this is a structure and everybody understands their jobs and, and, you know, how they should be done. So I think that's one of the hardest things for a board to do is to understand its job and to, and to do the job that it, that it should be doing without having a structure like this. So my two cents.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I, Jim, I wanted to ask, I, you know, I, I really do have faith in the, in the soundness of this. Could you give us some sense of like the learning, the, the learning curve involved in terms of time or perhaps ideas or ways that you guys incorporated what you were doing into your active work as you went along?
Yeah, we're, we're actually still in process, I'd say. We're, you know, we're going through with, you know, individual, you know, it's, it's a multi-year process to get it fully, fully in place. You know, we're going through executive limitations now and defining Randy's job. We're just getting around to sort of defining the board's job a little bit more clearly with policy. So it's, you know, how, how we're doing it, you know, frankly, it's a, it's a learning curve as you, as you go along. My, my hope here is that all of us board members, we actually put some effort into understanding it. And, you know, it's been a multi-year process to really feel that we start of, you know, sort of do understand how it works. I think that it's going to be a lot easier for new board members because we're going to be their resource to get them up to speed and they're going to see the structure that's in place. But when you're first, when you're putting it in place and going policy by policy, you know, putting in each individual executive limitation, you know, that's, it's, it's a learning process. It, it takes some real effort. But once that structure's in place, I think newcomers will have an easier time picking up on it from other board members and, and being taught. But, you know, again, it's, you know, I'm, I'm a great believer that, you know, you do need some kind of structure. And if it's not this structure, you need some other kind of structure. And, and I just haven't found a, a better one out there. But I'll tell you, John Carver drives me up a wall too because, you know, he's sort of Mr. All or Nothing. My way is the right way. But, you know, but trying to adhere to those roles as much as you can, you know, and only taking latitude where, you know, everybody agrees that it makes some sense or is necessary, you know, is, is good discipline for a board.
And, and is it safe to us to, I mean, in my thinking about it, I, I thought, well, Taconic and Green is, is ahead of every, of the other smaller boards that either are part of it or satellite like we are. And is there a trickle-down factor that can be taken advantage of? In other words, can we as the Meadowwe Board look at some of the templates that you all might have already visited and utilize them for ourselves or?
I think you should feel free to take anything and everything from us. Ask us about it, talk to us, you know, invite us in, do whatever. You know, it's, it's interesting because I, I, you know, being on the BSBA board, I'm also working with some boards that have been doing policy governance for like half a dozen years. And they, they're, it's really, you know, pretty much in place. And to them, it's pretty second nature now. And so I find them, you know, go to them every once in a while and say, you know, wait, you know, how did you deal with this or that? And I think those, I, I think there's a, there's a growing community of, of, of school boards going with policy governance. And, you know, I can put you guys in touch with others who use Taconic and Green, whatever, you know? That's what, that's what this being one happy family here under the SU is all about, you know? We should borrow from each other.
Didn't we already do that some? I thought we, we did look at some of the work that Taconic and Green had done. And that was something else, but.
You, you probably did. And to tell you the honest truth, when we put in place the first set of, you know, the first set of policies, you know, it was awfully close to the, we, we went through it, discussed it and all, but it was awfully close to essentially the template we received. So we weren't trying to reinvent the wheel. And I, and I, I think a suggestion I'd have is don't try to reinvent the wheel upfront, but, you know, live with it a little while and you can always make adjustments as you go, you know?
And then I would think that in, in those adjustments comes the personalization and the character that you were talking about possibly.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I mean, it should fit your board in the end, but, but it's a good basic structure to start with.
I just wanted to add that while I was, you know, at meetings and a part of this process, Taconic and Green, I was very backseat to the process. And so, you know, in all honesty, coming on in July, in the midst of everything we were coming on to, I was nervous. I don't know, you know, how obvious that was, Jim, but I was a little bit like, oh my gosh, do I have a strong enough understanding? And I, you know, it's just the insecurity, I think, that would come in from my position. But the, but I wanted to say that, that it, there is this constant learning and growth process. I'm not sure if you ever truly kind of arrive at policy governance, but, but the structure really, it facilitates the board's growth. It facilitates, I think, each individual board member's growth. And it certainly supports my growth and understanding my work. And, and it's, it's a very healthy, interactive governance style. So the structure is there, as Jim said, which is hugely helpful. So we are able to, to talk through when something, there's language within a policy that doesn't seem to work for us or we realize, and this just happened, I was doing an interpretation of a policy and we reviewed it at the last board meeting. And there were a few places where, when we talked about my interpretation, we realized that some of the language in the policy really didn't reflect what the board's intention was. So we went back and said, okay, we're going to change these words and change this language to make sure that the policy actually says what we wanted to say. And then I had to go back and now reinterpret based on the new language. And those types of details about process and policy are very, very helpful. So I feel like what I would offer you is in the middle of everything that we've gone through this year, I've still not felt overly stressed about coming to board meetings or not being prepared or not understanding where I think it could have easily gone that way. I felt very, very supported by the process and I think that you as board members would as well. It, it organically grows with you. And there's not an expectation that you are quickly like at this level or something like that.
One other quick thing to note, you know, the policy governance, it's, it puts a, puts a fair amount of work on the board chair. And I think you all need to recognize that and to the extent you can all kind of, you know, give an assist with that. That's a, that's a good approach to take. Just try to, you know, help the board chair because they have a, they have a bigger job under policy governance than without it. So.
Well, in that, in that respect, the more I hear about this and frankly, speaking with Rand, you and Randy is encouraging for me because I'm hearing that this is stuff where the rubber is actually meeting the road and you are using it in the course of how you are direct, and it's aiding you is what I sense. Julie, I wondered, without putting you on the spot, what's, what's your take on this? And my sense again would be that if we all kind of collectively get behind this, we could probably, you know, make it happen in a constructive way for ourselves going forward.
Yeah. So I mean, my take on it is that new board members are going to have to learn something anyways, right? So they can learn a different system or they can learn this system. And I think, I think I like this system. I think it makes sense to have the same system that Taconic and Green has so that Randy has some continuity across what she does because she already has to have multiple meetings with, you know, different people that she already has to take all of the personality stuff into account, different school cultures. Like it's a lot. So if, if boards had some sort of equal playing field, I would sense that that maybe would be helpful to her. And I'm all for doing things that are helpful to her in her work. I think my take at where we are at this moment in time is we're at a crossroads where we decide if we want to just vote on moving forward and, and We're at a crossroads where we decide if we want to just vote on moving forward and and just doing the work. Or if we want to take a couple of meetings to catch everybody up um and then move forward. Or and then make a decision about moving forward. But I think that um I think that we're coming to a point where we just need to make a decision.
Well, it it seems to me, just from the this conversation, that it looks like there is a reasonable consensus, at least with the. You know, the few board members who have been somewhat exposed to this. My personal point of view would be um, and I'm feeling a little more sure about this. You know, let's, if if we are, you know, all in agreement that this is something we want to pursue. My point of view would be, let's get on board and begin to pursue it. I don't think I'm getting any less busy and I'm certain that I'm not getting any younger, so. So you know, let's let's toot the horn and let the train leave the station is my is my point of view.
Yeah, so I guess just um, I I think Cynthia and Anthony haven't had an opportunity to like read through any of the book at all. So I guess I'm just curious if if you two feel that it would be beneficial to um play catch up and get you. So you're a little more familiar with it, or if you feel that you would be able to just jump on and and kind of start rolling with things. And we'll just move forward and get um and to be clear, moving forward means having someone facilitate this with us. It means being trained, we're all going to be trained together. So it's not like you're expected to really like jump in to this pool where we all have this depth of knowledge that you don't have.
And and that was what what my my concern would have been on that. Is I I personally believe that structure and processes are in having those in place are important for any organization. As Randy said before, it made it makes her job easier, knowing that she they have this dialogue between the board and herself and clarifying things. That's going to be very, very important in any organization. Uh, my concern is not being fully up to speed with the previous work the board has done. That would be my only apprehension, but I'm all for structure and process.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I I would like to learn and I think I should, we should move forward, you know what I mean? And I can learn in the process when we're doing together, you know?
Okay.
Jill, Julie, I.
Go ahead.
Just one one thing I I think is always important, you know. As I said, John Carver can drive me nuts, his whole system and you know, it's so structured and all. You know, it's it's important to kind of, you know, that that's very helpful, but one thing you never want to lose sight of. Is that the the basic underlying principles of this are what you really need to keep in mind all the time. You know, basically, understanding the roles and responsibilities of each party. That, you know, that the board is here, you know, to do the board's role, not to do the superintendent's job. And you know, understanding some of the some of those, you know, basic concepts of of, you know, we provide the direction. And we expect the superintendent to figure out how to actually execute uh to to achieve the goals that we set out, you know? It's those sort of concepts that, you know, instead of, oh gee, what's in, you know, policy four point six point two point one? You know, it's that's that's not, that's not the real key of this. The key is to understand, you know, conceptually what all this means and and to just keep that in mind as you're running. And that's, I think, where, you know, newer board members, you know, if you get that concept, then it's a lot easier to, you know, just recognize. This, all this structure is meant to just keep you on track with those big concepts.
Okay, so Randy, my question to you in this is um, where would we be at with with Val?
Yes, so um, so I would say to you as a board that you 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 very much likely have a choice about who you could have support you in this work. You could continue on with Val and you could also, I think Jackie would be up for working with you as well. Um, either wa- either option, I think, um, I certainly have complete confidence and trust in. So if if uh if we do move forward, then what I would say, Julie, the first step is to meet with um. Either whoever it is, if we just say Val for the sake of this, you and I meet with Val and talk about, you know, what's happened since you last saw her. And partner with her about next steps along the way. And then that becomes more clear for both of us based on her input, um, given the time that there's been. And she can hear what you've already done and follow her recommendation. It probably isn't that many meetings, um, you've met with her a few times already. Um, but I would anticipate that we would invite her to, you know, a series of of meetings to move your process along.
Agreed, so um. I guess I'm hearing a general consensus that we're ready to move to officially move forward with adopting policy governance. Um, so and I'm hearing that our first steps would really be to involve whoever we're going to use as a facilitator. And just have a quick meeting and get them up to speed about where we're at and then just start. Um, do we need to have an official vote on adopting policy governance?
I I would recommend that you do that, yes. And and I'm happy if you would like to reach out to both Val and Jackie and find out their availability over the next, you know, six to 12 months. And um that may also guide what makes the most sense as our first step.
Okay, so. Are we needing that in the motion that we would reach out to those two and no?
I don't think so, you can just direct me to reach out and find out availability and get back to you. And then you can make a decision as long as the board supports the use of having a consultant to support you in policy governance. I would say over the next year broadly.
Okay.
For for whatever this is worth, um, as long as we are going to go go ahead with this, Julia, if I can be of any help for you that way. I I am going to try to up my um my participation, you know, rate in that way. And this seems like a really kind of worthwhile thing to dig into. So if you need a backup person or somebody to run something down, let me know and I will be available.
Thank you. Okay, so I would entertain a motion if someone would be interested in making one.
And well, okay, so I I'll make a motion that we pursue um uh our our uh. Information gathering with Val and I don't know if I should name specific names here. Um, in an effort to uh um pursue the board's um uh orientation with policy governance. I don't know, sounds rather.
I'm hearing a motion to adopt policy governance and move forward with finding a consultant to do so.
Yeah, like that.
I second.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Who was the second on that?
Anthony.
I thought so, I wasn't looking up, I was thinking that was your voice, but I don't know. Didn't want to ma- be wrong about.
So, any discussion? Okay, um, we'll just go ahead and do a roll call vote, Michael. Anthony?
Hi.
Cory?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Excellent, so Ja- um, Randy, you will reach out to Val and Jackie and just sort of check availability and um.
Not back to you.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, thank you. It was a great conversation, it was wonderful to hear your perspectives and insight. Um, and I look forward to this journey with you, it's going to be exciting, it's, it really is. I I've enjoyed the process and I look forward to going through it with you. Um, so you, the rest of this superintendent report, uh, like this whole superintendent section is, are distributions for you. So you have um a financial management questionnaire, which is very standard, you um, you've all done very well. And if you have any questions, I know Sue Wilborn's happy to answer any of those for you. Um, but we're in good standing um through that questionnaire process. Um, I have my superintendent report, which I'm happy to answer any questions or talk through if you have anything you'd like to discuss from that. And then you have the work plan which we sent. I also know Brooke um is happy to share a couple of highlights from Meadowwee for from the last month. If you're interested in hearing that as well, so I'll include that in my section. Um, she 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 didn't submit anything in writing, but she's happy to share some thoughts and experiences of things at the school with you.
Sure, I just had a question on um. Well, I had two questions, if I may, um, back to back them. The recovery planning, is this potentially some summer programming?
It is, it um, so the recovery plan itself is expected to start being implemented on June 1st. We are actually not going to call it a recovery plan, you saw my comments, we just had our meeting this afternoon. And um I am very excited, you are the first people to hear this and now it's going to be out there since we're being recorded and on YouTube. But we we really have been struggling with the idea of a recovery plan, we felt like it was a very deficit oriented uh title. Um, there have been a lot of benefits and a lot of work ahead of us. And so um, so we we are going to call our plan the Reset Education Plan. And Reset is an acronym that stands for Relationships, Equity, Safety, Engagement, and Trust. And those are the five components that we are going to have included in the broad categories of recovery planning. Recover uh Relationship, Safety, and Trust has been part of our work all year. So adding in equity as a priority, which we have had across our schools and boards. And recognizing that student engagement has been an area of concern as well. We added that in as to have five primary categories of work. So in our Reset Plan, um, we are going to be expanding summer programming. I just today got the last school's uh feedback from their school survey. We have, I have emails from 63 staff members. Uh, many of them are not interested in working, but many of them are or might be. Um, and we now have the scope of how many families are definitely interested or might be interested in summer programming. So I will be looking at that work over the next couple of weeks. And frankly, I have to somehow figure out how to wrap my head around the magnitude. Um, but we are hoping to offer summer programming in at all of our schools or at least five of our schools. Meadowwee certainly has both staff interest and student and family interest. And uh we would like those um, all of those reset areas that we're talking about are areas that we want to include in our summer programming. So we don't see this as being a purely academic experience where students come in and receive, you know, academic uh programming only. We'd like it to be a more holistic, child-centered um experience for kids. Uh, what we don't know is, you know, weeks it will be offered, how many days a week, length of day, we don't have any of that even scoped out. But I will say that system-wide, we do have high interest from families and students. And we have, we have a surprisingly high number of staff. And um my thoughts on this is that the more latitude and we can give our staff in planning, programming. The more that their passions and interests and focus areas are able to emerge. I think that that will lead to a a more enjoyable and um and engaging process for students. So I think there's a good match when teachers and staff are allowed to kind of run with their stuff, kids feel that. So that's where we are right now. Um, I don't know a lot of details, but I can guarantee you there will be programming.
Okay. And my other question was um, you had mentioned um not changing the schedule unless forced to by AOE. Do you think that's going to happen or do you think that they're going to be reasonable?
I do not believe that's going to happen, I mentioned that in the letter I sent out today. Um, I I think there's a number of reasons, I, that has not been the style of the AOE. They have left everything to local districts to make every decision this year. Um, the 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 landscape is not looking great for that right now. Um, I think optimistically, everyone was really hoping that by this time, COVID cases were going to be on a significant decline. Vaccines are going to be increasing, we wouldn't be having the case numbers we do in schools, but they're still here and they're here across the state. Um, so I don't believe that anybody is going to require us to do anything. Um, and so I anticipate that we'll be able to stay the course. I have been wrong many times though this year, as most of you know. So tomorrow, who knows what I'll be saying, um, but I I don't think so. And I'm not alone, many superintendents don't anticipate that we'll be given that kind of non-negotiable ultimatum.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Randy or comments or for Brooke?
The um, the one question I had, I just was wondering about the faucet and lead strategy relative to the water. And um, I I just was wondered, you know, what's going on, where are we in that process?
Yeah, your Meadowwee School is is good, you're good to go. Um, so all of your, any issues that you had early on have all been dealt with through filters or changes in, you know, hardware. Um, and then every single time we respond to a testing that is, you know, a testing level that's above the four parts per billion. We have to resubmit and then we get the results back. So um, as you know, through my report, there are still a few lags. Um, uh, and some of those are just because of, there were, there were a couple of options around how to deal with some of them, particularly MEMS. And we we chose an option that didn't solve the problem, so now the filter and then, you know. Apparently, we got the filters and the filters didn't fit, so now we have to resubmit for new filters, but we'll get there, I'm sure we'll get there, but Meadowwee School is all set.
Okay.
How often is the water tested at the schools?
It there, I, you know, I don't know that we have a regular testing protocol. When the new legislation came out, we were required to test all of the faucets. And so that's what's been started over the last couple of years, that's still in process. Um, I don't, I I can look into this more, Anthony, but I don't believe that there's like an annual um process that we are required to do. I think the belief is that once they're there, then for at least a period of time, you don't have to keep checking it. But I'm not sure what the expectation is on frequency, Brooke, you might have a sense of that?
So Anthony, are you talking about just lead testing or just all testing? Because we test our water often and we have quarterly tests and all types of tests. For lead specifically, it's not often, but we do have um regular testing that occurs and we get notifications of that. So it does happen often, but not not for lead, but just for other types of testing we do. And for lead, we only had one area, one faucet, and we were able to fix it and we were, we have no problems since, so. And I sign off on the water reports every month that we have a lot to do. So the water um operation is very complex and we are up to date and every month we submit forms to the state.
I remember being on the school board way back when the school was being built. Getting all of those things in place at that school was extremely complicated with sand, mound filtration and all kinds of stuff. So I guess that hasn't changed, Brooke.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments for Randy or Brooke?
Did you want me to give an update orally?
Sure.
So the teaching and learning, as you, I mentioned a few months ago, Merck Forest has been working with us with professional development. And Chris Hubbard um and I uh co-planned a few professional developments that were really engaging. Uh, we worked on nature journaling, recording metadata, zooming in and out, which is more like an art type um project. Conducting a sound map of what we hear. Um, and the resources that we have now are available for teachers for the future. And a lot of the teachers are very excited about doing these similar activities with their students this spring. And I just want to let you know that now it's getting nicer out, the the kids are outside all the time. And we're utilizing the Merck land, the property today and all parts of our property, there were kids outside. So even when, even though it was windy, um, I wanted. I wanted to let you know, we're starting S-Back testing. It's a state test, a Vermont test that is for students grades three through six. We began today. And this week, we'll be doing the math portion of the assessment. And then we decided to wait and not do it the week after spring break, but the following week, so April twenty-sixth through April thirtieth. And we're just wanting you to know that we kind of have a shift in the master schedule, so that students still remain to have their specials. And we're really doing our best to have small portions of testing each day. So it's low-key and the students aren't stressed with taking the tests. And I think that's been in a very effective way that we are able to proctor the test. I want to announce that we had our very first virtual all-school meeting, which was on March twelfth. And our staff and students were able to come together to celebrate birthdays and share announcements and celebrate artwork, all the artwork that's been taking place throughout the year. And Amy Harris took pictures of the artwork and Kelly Alfelt created the video. And that video was also featured on GNAT's website. And the article about the all, all school meeting was featured in the Manchester Journal, and I have links to both of those that I can share with you. And I want to give you announcements that the preschool and kindergarten screening won't be held at our school this spring based on our COVID restrictions. But we're going to work hard to reach out to our families in different ways to make sure that we have them enrolled for the fall. And the last announcement I wanted to make is that we had a, the sixth graders all worked on engineering projects. And one sixth grader designed a solid and useful bridge for his engineering project that helps our students cross the water so they can enjoy the Merck land next to our school. So that was a really successful project that was done and the students are really excited to use that bridge.
That was my throwback from the all-school meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Okay. So if, if everyone's all set, I think then we can move on to the community engagement discussion. And so, so basically, we had left that, like, let's see what we get for information and then we'll decide on next steps for processing the information and, and then, and then, you know, utilizing that. So. And now that we've had a great discussion about policy governance, I'm like, what, are we at a point? Are we at a point where we want to like sit on this? Or are we at a point where we want to start dissecting? I'd love some thoughts.
You mean for us to look at the, just individually look at the results and think about it and then come to the next meeting or two? Or what, what do you mean by sit on it?
So just like, I mean, we, we, we gathered this to have it in our mind for developing policy and priorities for our school system, which we get at through policy. So if we're going to be moving forward with, I'm rethinking sitting on it because I just don't think that it makes any sense to collect, to, to do this work and not do anything with it. But it would be a really great question to ask one of our consultants. So maybe we can all individually look through this stuff and then run this by our consultants because we're going to have, we're not going to, like, the policy governance steps, we're not going to jump right into like writing our policies immediately, but I do want to start paying attention to this data relatively immediately because we have it. Jim?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to toss out the, one of the big issue, one of the big things with policy governance is it, you know, becomes clear that this is one of those, those general directions that it takes you in that makes a lot of sense, but is a little uncomfortable. One of the, one of the board's biggest jobs is community engagement in policy governance. And so I think the, the whole engaging the community, we, you know, Chaconic and Green just did a big, a, a, a big survey as well to try to gather information to help with the policies. I think that's going to be an ongoing process. So I think of, you know, when you have information like this coming in, you start to work with it and that defines, you know, what's the next sort of reach out or how else can we, you know, try to engage with, with the community and continue to get input and continue to make them aware of what's going on in the school. So I think it's a, you know, community engagement becomes a, a, you know, one of the fundamental jobs of the board and one that never ends, you know, one that just keeps on going. So I'm, I'm just, you know, that's, that's one of those big picture items that, that, that is a big job of the board. And so my suggestion is just to think of this as, as not a once a year or anything like that, but trying to figure out a plan for continuing to make sure the community understands what's going on and you understand what the community is looking for from you. So. So it's a, so for that reason, I'd, I'd say just, you know, dive into it and then figure out how to continue to get good information from the community. That's my, any suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, you might consider Julie just even having people look at, I don't know what packet page this is.
It starts at fifteen.
Package page fifteen, you know, like what do you notice about the data? And just have a conversation as a board about what is it you notice here? What do you, what do you see? Is there anything that is surprising to you? It took me a little while, so can I just ask a clarifying question? I, I think, I want to make sure we're on the same page, that when I look at the, these rank order, that when we look at number one, the, the bar graphs represent each of those skills and whether they were marked in the first place. Right? So when we look at one, when I look at this, I noticed that critical thinking and reading slash writing slash fundamentals have the highest bar, so had the most responses in the first spot. Right? That's what everybody else is reading this to. Okay. So I don't know, Julie, that's one approach you might want to consider taking just to get the conversation started about what people see in the data.
Okay.
So if, if I'm understanding, Randy, what you just said, in other words, the bars don't suggest necessarily the most, where the weight of people's choice might be, it just, it represents that the most people voted on those spots. Is that correct?
I think it is the weight.
I think it is.
It's how many people ranked that number one.
Okay.
And then, so which I'm surprised, I'm completely surprised by the, the computer skills are so far off. You know, they're the, they're the, the sixth and by, by a huge margin. It's amazing.
I was surprised by that too, because it's such a part of everything that we do. But if you think about that, I think maybe that helps it to be ranked so, so low is that it's, it's such a looming presence in the background.
Probably, yeah.
That it's just kind of one of those things.
Not a separate skill.
Right.
Yeah. That's, that's possible.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was kind, I was kind of surprised that reading and writing fundamentals were, were ranked as highly as they were, like over problem solving. That one surprised me. Oh, yeah.
What shocked me was the, the math fundamentals being so low, ranked in the first category. And the computer skills, not until the sixth category. Those two really, really, really had me scratching my head a little bit.
But math came, like, the next one, it was like solidly, yes, math, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, when I look at this, I'm like, okay, so critical thinking, reading, writing, and math are like the top three that I can see from people. And then it's just sort of, and then it kind of moves along from there, but with computers fundamentals definitely being like a hard last.
Yeah.
But that's good to know. I mean,
Then I, I thought kindness being first on the, that was really, I don't know, I thought that was a neat response or, or result. Surprising as well, but appreciated, I guess.
I wasn't super surprised by that. I appreciate it. I, because I, I just think it's such a, it's such a key component in all the rest of it, right? Like, good citizenship doesn't tend to come when there's no kindness.
Yeah, it, it's make some sense insofar as, as the person, you know, as the child, I'm assuming one through six, you know, by then, there, you're kind of expected to take on some civic recognition and obligation. In first grade, that's not, you know, that's not a hugely, if I'm, again, I, frankly, I could not open any of the stuff that Celeste sent me earlier and I've been stumbling through this, but so I'm just looking at these charts for the first time with all the nice colors. But it does kind of make, make, make sense in terms of the develop, developmental progression of any given student too, in a certain way. You know, you imagine that obviously kindness is going to be there throughout, but the fact that, that, that community awareness suddenly shoots up toward the end of this seems to me an appropriate progression. It should do that. You're entering into the bigger community.
Yeah.
Consciously. Anyway.
So I think, so the, the one, two, three, four, five, and six, Michael, are like the rankings. So this means that people, the majority of people ranked kindness as the number one value. And then the majority of people ranked community pride the lowest.
Got you. Okay. Thank you, because I'm totally re, I'm misinterpreting these things.
Yeah, it took me a little bit to figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, going back to the first one, I, it, it's kind of interesting that we did the survey because I, I wouldn't have expected computers to be so last because they're so necessary. I would have thought the community would have ranked that as really important. I mean, in a way, it's refreshing.
In these days.
I still think reading and writing is the most important. Kind of love that.
I was surprised that respect for nature got, got some hard knocks there.
Maybe that's also, they think that's a given and that comes before school or, maybe, I don't know. Because it is a little surprising with our community.
Yeah, because we're like, just, just knowing our community, it seemed to me that, that that would rank higher, but it could be that it's just like, it's just.
A baseline.
Oh, it's always there.
Yeah.
Part of the education that, that we are already doing. You know what I mean? It's already there, like learning outside. Just, just being outside gives you that respect for being in nature. And so then it's kind of the rest of it that come, that comes along. Yeah, Brooke?
I just wanted to share that. That's one of the things that Mark works really closely with us on, is making sure that we're like being really respectful to nature and not taking things from nature or disrupting. And, and then today before Gina went outside with her PE classes, I heard her talking about the expectations when they're out by the river or by certain places outside. So it's really important for us to continue to do that. But my question for the board was, based on how we received these results, would you think about question, asking the questions differently to get a different layer of response? Or do you think the way you ask the questions is exactly what you thought the outcome would be as far as being able to see the data?
I don't think I can answer that yet. I, I think I need to like,
Yeah.
be with this data for a while.
It is definitely spurring more questions, like another layer of asking, but I don't know that we would, you could know that until you get this. I mean, because if you, if you build those questions in, you can channel somebody down a different direction too, if. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there again, I, I love that, that kindness was ranked so high, especially in the world we live in today. It's kind of encouraging and refreshing. So I think it would be interesting to take this data when we meet with either Jackie or Val and kind of ask them, you know, this would be a good sample, you know, like, all right, so here's this data. How can we work with this with policy governance? I mean, that would be a good exercise to do because it's something we, we're going to want to make use of this data. And, you know, hopefully we could learn from that process.
And one potential use for you would be to use this to inform your ends policy.
Yeah.
So the ends policy has certain components to it, but you know, this, this may lead as part of that process of your ends policy development.
I couldn't read the, the last page about how they wanted to hear from us. The lines didn't match up or don't match up?
Mine didn't, yeah. I had the same problem.
I was wondering if that, that, there's two with the same amount, but it didn't look like there was a corresponding. I was wondering if the, the data was repeated or something.
I can explain that, Randy.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's because the, the text is too long. I was able to, bear with me. I was able to fill in the chart, the second to last chart on page sixteen. I was able to fill those words in from the chart, but there was no way that I could do it on the last page. So. So basically, you're going to have to look at the data.
Yeah, I think that, I think, so I haven't had to do this in a while, but I think when you hover over it on the actual live feedback, it'll show up. So, so what we can do is try to go back to that and, and like handwrite it and manually enter it for you. Or just recreate this so that you've got, you know, a number of responses and percentage, but we can, it, it is, it's a weird facet of Google Forms when you're looking at the data that is kind of a pain. So we can look at that and try to get it more accurate and send that to you.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, the last two, the,
The lines.
The, the hearing from us and who responded were, were hard to see. So if we could get that, I don't know how you would get it to us differently, but I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll take care of that for you.
Okay. So I think if, I mean, it's definitely, it's interesting. I think maybe we should all like come back to this at our next meeting, like having kind of gone through it a little more and just maybe everyone can bring with them. I don't know. May, maybe we can look at, and maybe the new board members will need this sent to them, but like we have those placeholder policy governance policies that we used during our practices. So if we look at that, or if you can get us some information on like links to other boards that use policy governance, like links to their policy pages, and we can kind of look, do, like do a little bit of homework and looking at what our data is and what these other boards have and see where we would, how we would tweak it, how we would tweak maybe some of those end policies to cover these things. And just kind of have more of a, a more in-depth conversation about this data. Um, and just kind of have more of a, a more in-depth conversation about this data. Um, at our next meeting and then I would just as soon have a follow-up. Maybe even if it's just at our retreat for, for next steps for gathering data or. Maintaining, you know, um. Ideas for maintaining. An open dialogue with our community to continue getting input. Does that make sense to, I don't know that I conveyed that well, but.
No, no, I, I, I believe it makes sense that we, I, I, I do think we need more time with this data.
If everybody can look over again before in the next meeting, you know, so.
And maybe we can each say like, what is your, your main takeaway, just like one or two thoughts on it to see if we are going in. The same direction with this information or if we're all pointing out different things that are important. And Brooke, I was wondering if you thought, are there, is there something that you were thinking from this? I'd like to hear if you had any thoughts about that.
Um, actually, right now, um, we are working as a staff to look at closely our vision and mission statement for our school. And I led the whole staff um, a few weeks ago to talking about kind of where would we like our Sierra school in five years. Um, I think all this work sort of aligns. I would like to show this information to our staff as well as we're thinking about moving forward. Um, this, by my meeting tomorrow is going to talk a lot about. Um, what we see as all of us brainstorm together, what we would like to see within our school in the next five years. So we're going to do that. And then we're going to talk about our vision and creating a vision statement, which is good to have some of this information um discussed. And then the next time we come together, we're going to talk about our core values, which kind of aligns this. I mean kindness, I'm sure will be part of it and being honest. So core value work and then how that we can create a mission statement as a school. And I think some of this can kind of come together. And then we also, as the teachers and I are talking about professional development. And our main goals and action steps to get there. So all the work I see coming together is what does our community want? And what do they see as important and making sure we put some of that stuff into um, our vision and mission statement moving forward as a school.
Were you surprised by any of the, like especially the first um, couple graphs?
I would say um, not really completely surprised. I think reading and writing is always an important skill that a lot of people would want and same with math. I am kind of surprised about the computer piece too, because right now our, there's a huge learning curve for all of us with computers and the expectation. Um, one of the things I noticed is that I think verbal communication is really important and that wasn't until like the third one that I was. So I was, I was surprised by some of the um, results. Kindness, I'm not surprised. I think that's important for, I think the community as well as our school. Um, and love of learning, I love because I want kids to be like, it's going along with the lines of engagement. I want kids to love to come to school and love learning. I think that is a really important piece as we're educating kids. And then the respect for nature, I'm not really surprised. I do think it's really important to a lot of families. Um, and I, so I, I don't, I'm not really surprised by that. I would expect empathy to be a little high, um, ha, um, more on that earlier part because I think a lot of. Uh, a lot of us talk about empathy daily and how others feel in social situations. And I know that social emotionally, that's going to be a really good, big piece to us as we're moving forward, problem solving, empathy, kindness are all things that. We are, um, it's important parts of our second step to teach students.
Just a thought, it'd, it'd be kind of interesting to, to take the exact same data and say, okay, well, let's combine one and two, combine one, two and three. And you know, if you, it makes it a little bit clearer. You know, if it's in the top two choices or top three choices, you combine that all together, it's a little different view of. The same data that's here. Cause you get so focused on how many people picked it for one and how many, you know. It's bunching it together differently could, could kind of be an interesting exercise.
I want to offer um, just a, a big, big picture lens of the, what we've been talking about tonight. So in this move to policy governance, you will develop your ends policy. Um, and, and what will happen is I will be listening um, very carefully to your discussions and the development of that ends policy. It then, it then comes to me to interpret that. Okay, for me to make sense of what this policy is, it's governing all of our work. And to then determine, okay, how do we start to execute this? That then gets, I, I then lead. The Meadowwee School and Brooke and frankly, you know, lead as it relates to all of your students. Uh, in, in moving towards achieving that. That means that even the work that Brooke's doing right now with her staff might be very much undone. Um, if it's not aligned with where your ends policies are. Because then what happens is there's this through line from the board to me to the school. For that, that's where your governance, the structure is, is in place for you. For my, my responsibility is to make sure that we're executing what you and you value, which is really. What you've interpreted and understand your community's values into our educational system. So um, then my supervision and my leadership of the school and the programming is directly tied. So um, the work we're doing should always come back to the ends policies and what you've. What your, your district policies are, are communicating to me about the work that happens. So I wanted to sort of make that connection for you as you're talking about policy governance, sort of how it, it indirectly relates to the conversation we're having now.
Yeah, okay. So does that make sense then if we um, put on the work? So we would put on the work plan um, for our next meeting that we will all come up with. Our own individual like interpretations of this data. And do a little bit of review of some policy governance board policies. Uh, that would help us with that ends policy work and then we'll put it on. Two meetings from then, or we'll put it on our retreat agenda to consider um, follow-up community engagements. Cause I feel like that's going to be a long discussion, like what are we, how are we going to maintain this? Dialogue.
And I think some of that will also become clear through your work with whoever you have as a consultant. You know, they'll really be able to support you in that work. Just for clarification on my part, as I'm writing my to-do list. Are you interested in some example of policy governance ends policies to be sent to board members prior to the agenda packet going out for the May meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll collect some policies and share those with board members. Um, so you'll have a few examples as you're reviewing your data. Okay?
Perfect. Anyone have anything else that they want to discuss regarding this, these results tonight?
No, I think we've come up with a reasonable method of, of going ahead and I definitely feel like I need some time to kind of. Sit through them because they're really kind of hard to interpret. So. I think, I think you've come up with a good scenario personally.
Okay. And is everyone comfortable? That's a, that's a good point too. Like does, is everyone comfortable reading this? Like, do we understand where we're, we're at? Like, we asked people to rank as their number one. Skill and we asked people to rank their number one value. And so that's where these, what these numbers are. And like Jim said, so if you look at um, if you look at like values, the first one. Kindness is huge on number one and it's also huge on number two and like empathy, if you put empathy together with number one and number. With people ranking it first and people ranking it second, kind of jumps up a little more than, than originally thought. When looking just at, at people that ranked it as number one.
Right. And then the other things too, I, I think you have to look at like basically the first three and then the last three. And sort of add them up because it really is polar, I mean, it, it, it does tell that story. Um, pretty, pretty well when you, when you do that.
Right.
Just because something isn't at the very top of any one, doesn't mean it's not very important in the first three. In the rankings like that.
Right. Okay. So if everyone is comfortable, then that's what we'll do um. For moving forward from this. And then that takes us to legislative updates. So I want to thank Jim for putting this together because there's a lot. It's a lot, Jim.
Maybe too much, but. The, but there's a lot going on. I, I, we discussed this at the B R S U board. And um, the thought was, you know, before every set of meetings, so. You know, this set is uh, you guys meeting tonight, then Win Hall and T and G meeting tomorrow night. And before each set, just kind of while the legislature is really busy, um. Give you guys, you know, something in writing that's an update of what, what could actually impact us. I, I don't want to, I, you know, I'm happy to come to any meetings, answer questions and all that. I think it'd probably be a waste of your time for me to. Go through, you know, piece by piece. I can give you, you know, I, so, you know, mostly interested in. Questions or how does this impact us or whatever? I can give you guys a couple of updates, you know, since. Since I wrote this, it, it's, there is so much going on in Mount Pelear, it's ridiculous. And with education, uh, this isn't everything. And it's moving so quickly that, that uh. You know, one of the items, the universal meals, S one hundred. That was when I wrote it, it was, this is going to happen and oh my gosh, it's, you know, it's scary as all get out. And you know, as I said, they put it aside and then they put it aside again and it, and it may not happen this year because. Finally, they realized the financial impact on the schools could be huge. And so they're trying to figure out what else they might want to do. So it's, you know, these, you know, I'm not going to go into each one unless you, unless anybody wants me to, but um. I wanted to give you all, I mean, the, and the pension issue, you know, I was early on the pensions. I wrote this a little while back for the V S B A board. The piece explaining pensions, which was, it just so hit the fan, you know, uh, uh, a week and a half ago. So much so that the, the, the Speaker of the House said, oh, never mind, you know, we'll, we'll create a study committee or something because, you know, it. It went from being a nothing issue to being the only issue everybody wanted to talk about. So. Things are moving quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, you know, if you've had a chance to look through it. If not, you know, I'll come back next meeting too and we can, you know, give updates.
I wanted to thank you for doing it. It is chock full. One thing that was kind of staggering was the teacher's pension. Number, which is just like, how does that happen in one year? That was one question I had. And the, the, the other piece was that the unfunded actuarial accrued liability is like a foreign language to me.
Right. I, I tried to that, that. You know, the uh, the definitions there, just a couple of, you know, key definitions there in the pensions, you know, the big, the big takeaways are. That it wasn't funded for a long time and, you know. It's compounding will, you know, is a great thing if it's working for you. It's a horrible thing if it's working against you. And uh, this has become such a big problem because it was let. It, it didn't get attention for so many years. And it compounded up to be, to be a huge thing, but the two, you know, so there's actuarially determined employer contribution. That's the amount that, you know, essentially that's, that's what you have to put in, in a year to meet the, meet the payment. The unfunded actuarial accrued liability, that amount, that's, that's the underfunding of the pension plan. So one is a, you know, it's how, how much would you really need to put in um, this year? Just to, to cover, you know, obligations that are current and then how far behind are you? What, it used to be all of that, so the, the, the underfunding, which is the. You know, they say, okay, we're going to owe, you know, three billion dollars over time, which is. You know, all these payments off in the future, you present value them back to now and you say, okay, we're going to pay three mil, three billion. But we only have, you know, a billion, so we're two billion short, you know, that's the underfunding portion. Then there's, if you, if you assumed you weren't underfunded, then how much would you need to put in? Today, just to meet the sort of current obligations. Problem we have is. That used to be all in the general fund and uh, the, our school budgets didn't carry any of it. And then in two thousand eighteen, they said, oh, you guys handle the current year stuff. And back in two thousand eighteen, that current year stuff for all the school budgets was only about six million. Now it's about sixty million. So it, you know, it just blew up. Um. And that's, that's the issue with the pensions overall. They're, if you, if you ignore it, it becomes a much, much, much bigger problem. And that's why, you know, paying some attention, there are no easy answers to this. And the whole idea behind this paper was just to get. To help you guys understand it because you know that. Our teachers are going to have a very, you know, a very strong opinion on it and, you know, and. A lot of people are going to have a very strong opinion on it and it's just, it's better if you know more, if you understand the background. So that's the whole idea here. So I don't know if I explained the, the A D E C and the U A A L at all, but, but it's the, the. The unfunded actuarial, that, that's. How much we're, how much it's underfunded, how much we don't hold in cash today versus what we should be holding. And then the, the, the A D E C is the, is just this year's payment essentially toward it.
Thank you for the explanation. It's sort of echoed what I think David Chandler had mentioned in passing at the, at the uh. T and G meeting a week or two ago, which is that you get mandates without money.
Yes.
It's up to communities now to come up with the dough to do the universal school program.
And that was the universal school meals. Yeah.
Yeah, so, and other things. It's pretty staggering. Thank you.
I find it funny that Beamers is, Beamers is fine.
Yep.
But again, that's like because they have it set, so it's employee and local level government. Like they're, they're mandating the local level government, take care of it and then they're doing it. And then you, when you broaden it out and go to a state level, all of a sudden we have.
Well, if you, if you want to get into the weeds with it, um, the, the document on that, that final page. Their, their plan, you know, specifics of the, the plan terms for Beamers, Visers and V, and Vesters, you know, so. The, the details of them and it's, it. The plans, it's really hard to, you know, it's totally apples and oranges, the way the plans work. They're, they're very different and it's hard to compare them. But if you do take a look at their, their single pagers that explain what they are. They're totally different structures of, of pension benefits between those three different plans. You know, they're very different. So it's some are better in places and worse in others and then, you know, it, so it's hard to compare, but. But Beamers, I, I just, you know, I'm a finance guy. So I looked at it and I said, Beamers was just handled a lot more sensibly than the others. And since it was on the municipalities, they didn't let it get out of control.
Yeah.
Yep. So, you know, and if you guys, if you read through some of it and have a question, shoot me an email. Always happy to, I'm, I'm a nerd on this stuff, so I kind of enjoy it, so.
Thank you again, Jim. Does anyone, um, does anyone else have any questions right now for Jim? Okay. Um. And how do you guys feel about these? Like, would you like to have these continued updates?
Definitely, yeah.
Ab- absolutely.
Perfect.
Yes, yes.
Will do.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. So next meeting is May tenth. So next meeting is May 10th, 6:30 on Zoom. And then, um, we'll take a couple of minutes to go through our self-evaluation. Corey, so since you're, um, you're going to be collecting these, do you want to go, do you want to like run this part?
Sure.
Okay.
Just a second, I gotta flip back and forth between them.
Okay, so I'm going to sign off. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Jim.
Good night.
Okay, so let me just check. Okay, what is the level of engagement of all board members? I guess I will just like, I can compile everybody's answers. I think I, I did that last time and then I can present them maybe every few months or in six months or something like that, if that works.
Yeah.
I think we had a high level of engagement this, this meeting.
Right.
I do too.
Was the agenda followed? Yes. That's kind of a straightforward one.
Yep, just going through the list.
Yeah.
Top to bottom.
Which, I mean, it's, I guess I would worry if, if it weren't followed, but. Yeah. Was the agenda linked to our annual work plan? Yes, and it was included, so we see it in there. With our community engagement, I think.
Absolutely.
Did we spend sufficient time on community engagement?
I think with question four, it seems like only the A part of that question would even apply to us, no, at the moment?
Right, because we haven't fully adopted. Um, uh, yeah, policy governance, so yes. And I do think we spent quite a bit of time and sufficient time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we spent a lot in this meeting on that, just talking about the results. And, and I think we did touch on ends because we talked about using that data for developing ends. So I, I, I think we did A and B.
I agree, actually. All right, the consent agenda was used appropriately and yes.
Agreed.
What went well, this is where we have some inputs. I actually really liked our survey discussion. I love that data and sort of analyzing that. I think that was really, really helpful.
Yeah, it was gratifying. It was like the fruits of our labor. We spent a lot of time, you know, hashing and rehashing those questions and, and to finally get results, which I think, at least for me, some of those were kind of not, I thought they were kind of interesting, you know, not necessarily what I expected. So I thought that was, I thought that was good.
Yeah, it was really fun to see, like, we did that.
I also appreciate, feel like this is well organized and that we're, you know, you're like hitting the, the, the data points and open the discussion up Julie in ways that everybody really has an opportunity to contribute. And I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank, I think that's where we, we shine. I really like, I don't, I don't ever want to have a board where somebody just sits on the fence and waits to see what direction the wind blows. Like, we should all be here, uh, you know, with our heart on our sleeve and, and like letting it all out there. Yeah, so.
Definitely.
Don't get me started.
So anything else that went well? I love the legislative updates and Jim attending, that was nice. I don't know if he can do that all the time, but.
Yeah, but it, it was, it's really good. Like, he really puts it. And he put a lot in, into it and I'm really appreciative of that because it's so hard to keep track of everything that's happening.
Yeah, it's constant.
I agree. He's also really articulate and good at sort of boiling out what we need to get from it. So that, I'm thrilled that he's going to continue doing that for us.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have concerns with this meeting?
I don't have any, anything to list on their concern.
I don't, although the one, I mean, it's not a real concern, but I, I don't know if we have people attending in, like, in the public. Um, and that was like the, one of the number one ways that they want to hear from us. So there is a little bit of a disconnect with that and I think that that would be something we could try to work on.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm no.
Well, the number one ways they wanted to hear, wasn't it like, uh, website and Facebook?
Yeah.
Not so much meeting, you know, so that was interesting.
I thought the meeting was up in there, in the top responses though.
It was like.
I don't think it was.
Okay.
Well, we can.
It was high in the list, but low, lower in the percentage.
Oh, yes, I see. Okay.
Yeah, so they kind of fit.
20%. But we haven't had people attending as much.
Maybe they just trust that we're doing such an excellent job.
Yes, that's true. Oh, yes, it's a vote of confidence. Okay, how could the meeting be improved? I think everybody brings up Julie's treats.
Yeah, sure. And maybe starting the meeting at 5:00 AM and ending by seven would be, uh, would be something.
I might catch you on the, at the, I don't know, that's a little early for me or late, yeah, early.
Yeah.
I mean, I can be up, I am up at 5:00 AM, but I'm not like pleasant until.
I was, yeah, I was kind of kidding.
Okay.
We might have a whole lot more listed under concerns if we have a 5:00 AM meeting.
5:00 AM, I will tell you literally what I'm thinking.
Talk about heart on your sleeve, right?
Um, so I do, I mean, I guess something that we should think about is public, like when we are meeting in person, like when, when we will. And I, and maybe that's just up to the state, but, um, I don't know. I think it is coming up for boards in general. Some, some boards are, are, and I'm not even talking about school boards, but just boards, municipal boards. Um, some people are coming back to in-person, like there's a, we should, we should all be thinking about that potentially happening this summer slash fall.
I wonder what the vaccination rates, I'm actually, I have had my two shots, so.
Yeah, who's, yeah, I, I get mine ninth. How do other people stand?
So, yeah. I got through some working in the restaurant industry, so it's interesting. Um, how that balances out, but I would think maybe Vermont would be pretty well through the summer.
Yeah, I think, so I'm not eligible until the 12th to even make an appointment. But that's like a week away, so, um, it's coming soon. I would think that we would all be vaccinated by fall.
Yeah, we could just put on for the June meeting, uh, discussion around meetings. Uh, and just plan on that as a future agenda item. I think we'll, you know, and if in two months we don't have more information, so be it. But I, I think it's a good chance that in June you'll have something to work with. To at least start talking about the retreat in August and, or August meetings in September.
Right. So, well, our retreat's in June though, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Sorry, I can't keep talking about those details at this moment, so.
I mean, might we all be vaccinated by June or no?
I don't know what the weight is. Um, Bob is actually.
It'd be close.
The, so like for, when Julie is eligible by age, I don't know how long, how far out those are. I don't know if anybody else.
Yeah, well, we, we can touch on it in our main meeting, see where we stand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also think that what Randy mentioned earlier in the meeting about her sort of strategy going forward is not one to, to forget, which is, you know, let's, let's hope for the very best and expect nothing until it actually goes up. Uh, that's sort of how I.
Is that what I said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I'm kidding. I know.
Because we really don't know, you know, I was looking at data that I probably shouldn't be looking at, you know, about how unstable this, this thing is now again, and there's pla- places where it's spiking and there's new variants and all other anxiety producing stuff.
Yeah, and Brazil.
Yeah.
Yeah, Brazil right now is, uh, my parents are in quarantine for three weeks. Everything shut down. You know, everything is like in the beginning a year ago, they're third week this week. So it's, it's sad, you never know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's not a very positive note to end the meeting on.
Well, we'll have to come up with something, I'm, we'll get.
When we go back in person, we have Julie's lemon bars to look forward to. There's a positive note.
We're going to have to make like the biggest batch of lemon bars.
There you go. You know, that's positive.
Size lemon bars would be good. Truly like five foot tall ones.
Right. We will coordinate with Skinnest, world records, and we will, and that will get some community engagement. It's true.
You got a lot of lemons, make lemon bars.
There you go. It really brings it all right, all right together. Perfect. Okay, is there any public comment?
None.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Excellent. General consensus of the board? Perfect. Okay, then we'll adjourn at 8:13.